I'd like to call board of the meeting of the village board for June 16, 2020. Please join us for the fledge allegiance.
I fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Corey, you call the roll?
Yes. President Deesegone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
We're having a public meeting here. Anthony's gonna come back and figure out what's going on.
Trustee Lomax?
Here. Here. Can you hear me?
Trustee Cannacola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
I thought they had to do it.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
And seven. Have you anyone moved to public comment? Does anyone wish to address the board? Just go to the opposed proposal and state your name.
We have two this evening. The first one we have is Roy in regards to gem car wash.
Hello, everybody. Hello. My name is Roy Dominguez, 114 Parkside Lane. In regards to the gem car wash, having an exit on Eastview Avenue on the northeast corner of that lot. I got a petition here from all the neighbors. That way they can be contacted direct from the village on any future meetings and whatnot. And what we're asking is to not have that exit on the east view, the southeast corner for emergency exit, sure, you know, but to have just regular traffic flow on it's crazy. But also maybe we can have a future study with some type of designated turning lane into this establishment. Seven, it's gonna be open seven days a week with long hours and our production or prediction of customers is gonna be quite a bit. And I guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to submit this to you guys.
Yeah, we'll take that for the record and the staff recommendation tonight will be to remand the gem car wash item back to the CDC for further review.
Yeah, what does that actually mean, though?
That meeting you went to at the CDC?
Yeah.
We're gonna have that meeting again.
Oh, okay, so they can...
We can go through it all over again.
Go through the whole process again?
Yeah, we want to make sure we do this right.
Okay, great, fantastic. So I'm gonna submit this to the board.
If you want to hang out too afterwards, if you have a few seconds, please hang out.
Sounds great. Now I'll give it to you, Corey. Yes, okay, sounds good. Thanks, Matt.
Okay, the second public comment we have was submitted online and I will go ahead and read that into the record. This is from Marshall J. Subak in regards to 249 South Church Road in Bensonville. President Deesegone, village board, please be advised that my office represents Ryan Lee with effect to his family while a recreational vehicle to be parked in his front yard of his home building at 249 South Church Road in Bensonville, Illinois, 60106. Due to the ongoing coronavirus pandemic, I have advised my client not to attend the board meeting. I hereby submitting this correspondence on behalf, on his behalf and his or his variance request. My client, Ryan Lee, and his family are avid campers and enjoy camping several times a year. Although my client's post office mailing address is 249 South Church Road in Bensonville, Illinois, 6016, his property actually faces Timber Lane. But part of my client's home faces Timber Lane and is a front road driveway. The driveway widens to the west and as approaches Timber Lane. My client seeks this variance to allow the parking of his camper on the driveway and attempt to have it located in a location which it would be most concealed for the neighbors. Prior to filing petition, petitioner, prior to filing petition, I met with staff who were very accommodating to come onto my client's property and have moved a proposed location. Staff recommend approval of the variance as the proposed location seemed to be less fit for my client as well as the surrounding properties. At the CDC hearing, there were a mix of people that spoke, some favoring variance and others objecting. It is not my client's intention to bring any neighborhood issues over this issue. My client is simply looking to allow to park his camper on his property as allowed by Bensonville Code. Although there were suggestions to depart the camper off-site, my client does not believe this is a viable long-term option as he would be required to pay lease fees. It is not clear whether or not any surrounding properties are permitted to lease out their part of the house or camper storage under Bensonville Code. My client is in the process of having some mature landscaping installed along his property line to help further screen the camper from the neighbors. My client is respectfully requesting the board to approve the variance to allow for parking of the camper in the driveway. If the board does not approve the variance, my client has, as an alternative remedy, applied for a building permit to construct a concrete pad on his interior side yard which will comply with Bensonville Code. I thank you for your consideration in this matter, very truly yours, Marshall J. Subak.
Are there any other online comments?
Who's calling the comment?
Have any other very popular comment? This time public comment is concluded. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 26, 2020 Village Board meeting?
There's a motion.
Is there a second?
You have a second.
Motion for the minutes. Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
And one for an hour and a minute. Trustee Frye?
Here.
Vote yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
The motion carries and the minutes are approved. Item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $2,6895.68. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
You have a motion.
Hey Frank, I'm gonna refuse myself from this.
I need to refuse myself, too.
So trustee Perez and trustee Franz are refusing themselves because they have bond reimbursing, right?
Yeah, they previously had building permits that had bonds placed and they're just getting their bonds back.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Yep.
Is there any discussion on the warrant?
Lomax had the second for the record.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
You should still call them so they can abstain.
Trustee Franz?
You can just say that you're abstaining.
I need to be refused.
Just, yeah, you're abstaining from the vote.
And trustee Cannacola?
No, Perez.
I'm sorry, trustee Perez.
Trustee Perez, please state that you're abstaining from the vote.
I'm abstaining from the vote.
Thank you.
The motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. There's an ordinance of the village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook Counties, Illinois approving and supporting a state of emergency to protect the public health, state key welfare, and provide relief to the residents and business community. There are motions to approve this ordinance.
You have a motion.
I have a second.
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, any discussion, Evan?
Yeah, so as we've become pretty accustomed to, as the mayor signs emergency declarations, we come back at the next board meeting to ratify that declaration. That's what we're doing tonight on this agenda item and I will point out that we intend to have the mayor sign another declaration at the conclusion of this meeting. The declaration is in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Record show that trustee Perez is disconnected from the meeting. We hope to add him shortly.
Let's, that's fine. The five, the motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance of the village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook County, Illinois, amending section 4-4-3 of the Bensonville village code as to firearms license procedures. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, there's discussion, I know we've gotten a bunch of calls on this.
Yeah, so I'm actually gonna wait and see if we can have trustee Perez reconnect before we have this discussion.
I believe so.
Yeah.
There he is.
All right, trustee Perez, welcome back to the meeting. Please let the record show that trustee Perez has entered the meeting. So we are the...
Sorry about that.
So at the discussion portion for the agenda item, a little bit of background on this, this was actually brought to our attention by one of our residents. The village code was a bit unclear regarding if ammunition for firearms was permitted to be delivered. The previous ordinance could have been read to prohibit it, which was not the intent of the village. Many companies do deliver ammunition to licensed firearm, sorry, licensed firearm owners within the village and this clarifies the language so all potential companies are on the same page. So we're actually just deleting one word to clarify this ordinance. This also keeps us in line with the Second Amendment and keeps us out of any constitutional question.
Any questions from the board? No questions from the board? Please call.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six. The motion carries and ordinance is passed. Community and economic development ordinance of the village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook Counties, Illinois, naming a dedicated right-of-way commerce court within the village of Bensonville, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So yes, I've let community development director Scott Beiger into this meeting. Scott, we are on the agenda item regarding the dedication of right-of-way for commerce court. Can you please summarize?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the redevelopment of the ledge of the Bensonville Golf Course or Grand County Line Road. It's being reimagined, of course, as a hospitality campus and the recreation and commercial area to the north. This is the previously dedicated right-of-way goes from Grandy Avenue about 550 feet to the north to provide access to the Bo Jackson Lee Sports Dome that's under construction. The name selected is Commerce Court and the ordinance you have in front of you names the right-of-way Commerce Court. We recommend its approval.
This is timely. As the Bo Jackson Dome continues to develop, they need addresses for the utilities and so, Scott, the address for the Bo Jackson Dome will be, remind me?
I believe it's 1,000.
Oh, yeah? It's, yeah, it's coming along. You guys have a chance to drive up there and check it out. It's a sight to see.
Any questions from the board?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
The motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance approving text amendments to Title 10 zoning ordinance, chapter 10, signs. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Patel, this is somewhat, can you walk us non-planners through the text amendments?
Yeah, this was a staff recommended, staff-generated request. It basically deals with the master sign plan section of the code. Frankly, it eliminates the master sign plan section of the code. It replaces it with a design review section encompassing all of the standards that you find in the current master sign plan, but opening it up to a little more flexibility in the design review process as opposed to a strict application. So it does talk about the background and text colors, a lettering style, mounting heights, materials and so forth. The goal is to provide a harmonious and compatible sign plan without, you know, the strict uniformity that we have in the current master sign plan where every sign is the same. So it did go to the CDC on the 5th of May. They recommended approval for it or nothing. Of course, there was a staff-generated request, so we're in favor of it as well. The ordinance you have before you makes that text amendment.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number three is a motion to remand to the community development commission an ordinance requesting variations pertaining to the construction of a car wash at 904 through 910 West Irving Park Road, Bensonville, Illinois. Is there a motion to remand to the community development commission for further consideration the application seeking variances for the construction of car wash at 904 through 910 West Irving Park Road?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, discussion? Got it.
Yes, sir, this was before the community development commission earlier this month. There was a little bit of confusion as to the IDOT approval status and there was, as we were excited, there were a number of residents at the meeting, both in person and electronically. This is a complicated request and so we felt it best to send it back to the plant, excuse me, the CDC. We've republished for the 7th of July so that all the neighbors can come back again and we can hash this out in another public forum. So we recommend the remand to the CDC.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we did receive a public comment on this and just to reiterate, this will be sent back to the CDC for further review. This is not being approved nor is it not denied tonight.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes, but yes is approved, correct? Yes.
Trustee Franz, are you with us?
Yes.
Are you voting yes to this item? Trustee Franz, there's a vote to remand the item back to the CDC. That is a staff recommendation. Are you voting yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, my phone keeps cutting in and out.
Thank you.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six. Motion carries and matters referred back to the community development commission for further consideration. Number four is consideration of a motion to take a request for a variance at 249 South Church Road from the table. So is there a motion to take from the table the recommendation of the community development commission to deny a request for a variance at 249 South Church Road?
You have a motion then.
Do I have a second?
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So this, this is procedural agenda item tonight. This was tabled back at the March 17th meeting. If you recall, that's when things started to get a little crazy with COVID-19, so we requested that we just table this. We are now taking that item off the table to be voted on at the next agenda item. So we're asking for approval to take the item off the table.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
The motion carries and now considers matter. Number five is an ordinance denying a variation to allow recreational vehicle parking in the front yard at 249 South Church Road, Bensonville, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this is the item that we just took off the table. It is a, the staff recommendation is a vote to deny the variance. We have read public comment in from the petitioner's attorney at the beginning of the meeting and so again, we are asking, staff is asking the board to vote yes to deny this variation.
Any other questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
The motion carries and ordinance is passed. We do not have anything under finance. Police Department, is an ordinance amending section 3-3-5 of the Bensonville village code liquor regulations to increase the number of class E2 liquor licenses from two to three for Austin Italian Deli. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Can you please repeat that? We didn't hear you.
You're muted.
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I will hand this off to deputy liquor commissioner Corey Williamson.
Good evening. This is a liquor license amendment to increase the number of class E2 liquor licenses which allows for the sale of beer and wine for consumption on promise while food is served. The applicant is Austin's Deli owned by the Ford brothers, all the background checked, all clean, no issues at all from the buyer or state of Illinois. No inspectors conducted inspection on the property. No issues there either. If approved, it will be the third class E2 license we have issued behind Baj's Pizza and Andrew's House.
Any other discussion from the board?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Under public order, the resolution authorizing a purchase order to A special electric supply for the village facility lighting replacement project, comment in seventh, for not to exceed amount of $17,336. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Yes. Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So I have admitted assistant public works director Mahul Patel to discuss this item for public works. Mahul, can you please mute your YouTube stream and discuss your item?
Yes, we want to...
Give you a second here.
I got it. Okay, so the item in front of you right now is to actually install 165 new LED lights at the John Street Edge facility. The 165 lights will be installed over the ice rink, the lobby area and the locker room area. Previously, we upgraded the LED lights in the pool area. We are anticipating a total cost of $17,336, $17,336 to install the lights and comment reimbursement for this item anticipated to be $10,050. And our auto pack it costs will be $7,286 and staff recommends approval of the item.
Thank you. Tackling these energy efficiency projects wherever we can. Most of these have been grant-supported, which is great. Our target right now is around a two-year payback period, so the fact that this is a six to 10-month payback period shows you how great of a project it is.
Any board questions? Or questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering service agreement with Jamie J. Benison Associates Incorporated for the 2021 CDVG annual residential streetlight project in an not-to-equal amount of $73,412. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Patel?
This resolution is authorizing a design engineering services to begin the design for the 2021 residential streetlight program which will be located in the Brentwood area. We are anticipating about 100 streetlights to be installed as part of this project and we recently received the award letter from DuPage County regarding the funding. We received a total of $400,000 in funding for an estimated $1 million project. And this will be the fourth time we're capitalizing the CDVG grant to install residential streetlights throughout the town. And we're anticipating the funding will come through late fall, early winter of 2020 and we can possibly be doing construction in the middle of the winter or even early spring next year.
I will say that in our community surveys, residential streetlights have always been a very positive, ranked very highly. Also, when we do our copies with the mayor, the Brentwood neighborhood especially, they tell us that they want streetlights, so we're very, very excited for this project to go forward. It's gonna be a big project for us, over 100 streetlights. I think it'll be one of our larger streetlight products that we've done in recent years. So, Mr. Patel, thank you for your report on that. Does the board have any questions?
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to the DuPage River South Creek work group for the 2020-2021 annual dues in an not-to-equal amount of $14,503. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Mr. Patel?
Yes, so the main goal of the DuPage River South Creek work group is to improve the water quality in the east and west branch of DuPage River, South Creek and its tributaries. Our wastewater treatment plant discharges to one of the tributaries to South Creek. This work group was very instrumental in securing the one-point milligrams per liter phosphorus removal from our wastewater treatment plant when we did the upgrade a few years back. Without that limit, we would have been paying almost over $100,000 annually to reduce that phosphorus limit, but because of our participation in this work group, we are actually have been provided some relief regarding the phosphorus removal. And our permit requirement for the discharge from the wastewater treatment plant actually requires us to participate in this work group on a continuous basis, so we recommend approval of this item.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Cannacola?
Yes.
Trustee...
Yes.
That's six. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Under recognition, a resolution authorizing the execution of Ice Arena and the use of the agreement with the Brentwood High School Hockey Club. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Um, I have let, uh, Recreation Director Todd Fenner into the room to discuss his agenda item. Mr. Fenner?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this first item is, uh, simply a housekeeping item by the Amateur Hockey Association of Illinois. Uh, apparently when they originally signed the contract in-
Todd, real quick, uh, the first agenda item is for the Fenwick High School Hockey Club, uh, license agreement?
Okay, sorry about that, lost you when I was switching over. Uh, this one's real simple. This is just an annual license with the Fenwick High School Hockey Club. Uh, between late August and the first week of March, they're gonna purchase one practice sheet, hour and a half slot on Tuesday nights, as well as three game sheets on Sunday nights. Total value of the agreement to the village is seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Panacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez? Armando?
You're breaking up. Armando, are you voting on this item? Thank you.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing amendment to the agreement with the Amateur Hockey Association of Illinois. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second? You have a second?
There being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Fenner, we'll hand it back to this simple housekeeping item.
Yes, uh, this, uh, was a housekeeping item with the Amateur Hockey Association of Illinois. Each season since the year 2000, they've brought various events to the Edge Ice Arena. Uh, this one, uh, they had to pull an event over Christmas. It's known as the Blackhawks Charities Holiday Exhibition, typically a high school tournament sponsored by the Blackhawks. Uh, since the Chicago Blackhawks have built their own purchase, or their own practice facility, the Blackhawks have withdrawn sponsorship, and they have moved the, uh, tournament and taken over the tournament in their own facility. So the Edge has lost that one. Uh, the other item on this, uh, change to the agreement, uh, was that they had discovered that they had an incorrect signee on the original agreement, and they wanted to clear that up and get the proper signing authority named to the agreement, which is the executive director.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?